I'd like to request a moment of silence for Officer David Newman. He's a retired officer of twenty nine years with Chandler PD. He retired in 2015. And he also came to Globe with Chief Walters. Also came here and did some investigation for the Globe PD. He was badly, badly ill from chronic illness. He passed away here. You were going to Chandler PD and Globe PD, Chief Walters.
Shelley, can you do a roll call, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. District one, Councilman Rios.
Present.
District two, Councilman Presley. District three, Councilman Lethem.
Present.
District four, Vice Mayor Stapleton is excused. District five, Councilman Gonzalez.
Here.
District six, Councilman Shipley.
Here.
Mayor Gamaros.
Here.
We have a call, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Your gracious heavenly Father, thank you for this time and our opportunity to serve this community. Lordly, thank you for this counsel and time they give to serve as the fiduciary caretakers of the city of Globe. We pray that the decisions made this evening will sustain the quality of life and public safety for our residents. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Before we read our first action, I just want to acknowledge the county officials. The building today, we've got Mr. John Allen, who is the barrel of the county treasurer. Welcome.
Welcome. My wife is helping.
So item one is action. Item one A is consideration to approve the adoption of the City of Globe Fiscal Year 2023-2024 tentative budget in the amount not to exceed sixty-five million, three hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars, which includes twenty-one million, one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars in unfunded grant requests in direction to make possible adjustments for this budget and announce the public hearing dates of July twentieth, twenty twenty-three, for the adoption of the final budget, and August eighth, twenty twenty-three, for the adoption of the property tax levy. Tina, Paul.
Tina, go ahead and jump on. I think we'll follow your format, and I think you pitch it to me at some point.
All right. Well, I think the first thing is... Do you manage this conference?
There you go. Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of council, tonight we're here happily to adopt our tentative budget. Legally, we have to set a maximum spending amount in this budget. A couple of comments on the budget. This, well, we've gone through a series of, you know, changes in changing people and getting our budgets lined up. This budget is as every other budget in the operational funding. We, the process is exactly the same. We take conservative estimates of the revenue coming in. We map out with departments, get their needs, look at personnel, get the PSPRS, get the Blue Cross Blue Shield, and map out those operational expenditures. This year, our revenues are above our expenditures by roughly three hundred fifty thousand in general fund and various funds. But that part is a mirror of what we've done pretty much every year since I've been here doing a budget. What is different about this budget is because of the changes going on and oversight and staffing, we are still going back and confirming all our assumptions on fund balance. Every year, we have an operational budget. We have expenditures. That money that's not spent falls into the bucket that becomes the fund balance. We're busy going through the 2022 fund balance and getting ready for the audit, and then still going through the 2023 fund balance. And while all the fund balance numbers are based on what we believe to be true, we're still, we're still going through and confirming those. And that's Dennis's job, that he's been working with us. So in order to be conservative on that, what we've decided to do is, what's not traditional about this is normally we have a list of CIP items, one-time purchases. And fund balance is a one-time money. Once you spend it, it's gone. It's not like an operational money that's going to come in again the next year. We're going to include a list of projects from each department that they normally would have asked council to evaluate and put into a ranking system in the budget and assign money to that. We're not going to do that assignment until we can make sure that we have both the 22 and the 23 budgets reviewed and confirmed and balances are correct. It shouldn't slow us down because we have so many projects going on. We have so many grant money and different projects we're in the middle of. We've got bridges going on, multiple bridges going on. So it shouldn't slow us down. If there's something that is needed so we don't slide backwards, that's been kind of my standard for we need to do this now with this one-time funding issue. We don't want to go backwards. But I think these projects, we can hold until we can get the numbers right. And that way, we give ourselves some buffer in case there's a difference in what we found. That's primarily the biggest change in this budget than other budgets. The other, the other change is this budget's been put together by a team, by Pat Walker, who has been with the city since 2016. She, she was Jeanie's mentor and consultant. And we're continuing with that same Pat Walker model. This year, we have Tina Allen, who's working on the budget aspects, and Dennis Osich, who's working on the reconciliation aspects of that under Pat Walker, although Dennis will come under his own contract now New Year's started. And so that's our budget team that's putting this together. They're solid, and they're on top of things, and they're very conservative. And I think you'll, you've heard portions of this presentation, and you'll see that tonight. Again, Pat Walker is on the line if you have any questions. But Tina's here to do the, Pat Walker and Tina will team up on the presentation as they did at the workshop. Mr. Mayor, members of council, oh, the, the other thing is the grant fund. The, not the, the grants and that extra money. We have, what, twelve million in requests in the federal government's, on the Senate side, with Kelly and Sinema. We have other money out there from both state and federal's. Not the money we've already gotten, but money that we're requesting or have requested or is waiting for concerns. We have about twenty-one million dollars in money that we hope to receive. Doesn't mean we'll get all that, but we can't receive it unless we budget for it. So while the maximum budget is sixty-five million, operational budget is about forty, forty-four million, and that includes everything in the way of enterprise and bridges and things like that. Operational budget, our general fund, which is the biggest of the budgets, eighteen million. So while it may look like, wow, we're doing sixty, sixty-five million, twenty-one million of that is money that we need to budget for. We, we have possibly more than twenty-one million worth of grants that we could hit. The grants are getting bigger and more meaty, but we have the ability to handle those. But I think we worked with the budget team to come up with about twenty-one is where the sweet spot is to where I think if we got that much, we would be good. Anything more than that would be hard to, hard to manage anyway, and it would come in over time. So I think that's a safe number. But I don't want the public to be just surprised at the fact that last year we did a forty-two million dollar budget, and now we're doing a sixty-five million dollar budget. It's simply the difference in the budget in the grant fund number, which is a placeholder.
Paul, I have like a two-fold question. So in that twenty-one million of money that the city's going after, are any, is any of that matching, any kind of matching contribution?
Much of it is not matching. If there are matches, we will build, we build those in, and we have fund balance that we can, we can pull from matches for. But these are not heavy on the, on the matches. A lot of these, like our bridge money is, you know, we did a, we accepted, what, three and a half million of sidewalks. It was a hundred and fifty-eight thousand for, for the match. We don't, the ones that we are close on, we built that match money in, if any. The ones at the, at the Senate level, they normally don't have a match. They're, they're an earmark to say. And, but anything that does, before we would go out to apply for it, we'd bring it to council and say, hey, here's one. It's a million and a half, but we need a, you know, a two-hundred and fifty thousand dollar match. We would have to, we could not, we would not apply for a grant with, if there's a match that we need to come to council for ahead of time because it's just not the right thing. It's, you, you need to make sure you have that capacity. The grant people, the people we're applying for, and I don't know if Connie's here, but she would tell you, we need to make sure, prove that we have the authority to have the match. And so usually, we need council action in the application to say, yeah, we will come up with our match.
So I think you answered my second question. Follow-up is if there is any kind of match that's built in, is that built in due to this anticipated twenty-one mil, or is it part of the general fund?
It, it's, it's not, the matches are not built in the twenty-one mil, but they would be built into the request process. If we got one, we did the application, and if there was a match and we needed verification, we'd have that. Then we would have to come out of the fund balance to do the match. So I don't, I don't think we budgeted any just generic match money.
Mayor, members of council, there might be additional funds in this enterprise funds, or perhaps the broken bridge funds would probably have some money.
Okay.
After the bridge is complete, so we've talked about that as well.
Yeah.
As projects get completed, and when we get to the one-time CIP money, some of that is done, will be set aside maybe for design of certain things, and sometimes that design will serve as a match. So it will, it will be looked at probably at the same time as the one-time CIP, to answer that question better.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilman Rios, I mean, there was a, there was an application that we actually decided not to go after because it required a twenty-five percent match. And we figured we'd just take that twenty-five percent and if we needed to use that. So if, if it's a heavy match, then sometimes we won't even, you know, between the match and the reporting and some of the timeframes, we make sure that they're compatible and they're within our, our capacity to live up to that match and follow up with that, or live up to that, that grant application. Some grant applications are a whole lot of work for not a lot of, you know, a lot back. We want the, it's a cost benefit on every, everything we do. And so right now, we're, there's so much out there that is pretty much, you know, not a lot of in-kind cash match, although, you know, some have to have hydrology studies and different reports and things like that that we need to have ready. But also in this budget is money to do those reports and get those documents and studies in place so we qualify. Hydrology study, I know, is one that we've been, excuse me, looking for to make sure so we can qualify for many of these, these grants.
Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Mayor, good.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Just want to make some comments. Some people will be surprised with that number. What is it, sixty-two million?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five million. But I base that, basing that means that we've taken a long, hard look at our infrastructure. And as an emergency manager with many years' experience at the state level and at this county level, there are some things that I don't forget. We still have an infrastructure, pick one, I don't care, that's over a hundred years old. When we go out and do repairs, ladies and gentlemen, the lines are replaced at, Jesse, you know the number, a hundred feet, two hundred feet long? Because they are severely old, and we don't do a five-foot or ten-foot repair. We do hundreds of feet just to maintain what we have and do the age of the infrastructure. I never forget that particular point about the city of Globe, and I'm not a calibrator in the city. But it's time to address this infrastructure now, while we have the opportunity and a long way, pick up any and all of that improvement that comes with it. It takes time, but we have that opportunity. If we just fixed the infrastructure, we would enjoy so many things that come with it. I guess what I'm trying to say is like the water issue and the infrastructure for both types, wastewater as well as freshwater. On the freshwater side, if we fixed all of our leaks, we could enjoy the installation of several subdivisions alone. That was brought out in some of the studies being made recently. So as we hear that it's a big number, I hear the other side. It's a bigger reconstruction or remodeling, whatever you want to call it, on the infrastructure side. That's why those numbers are large. We're seeing the fruit of some of that now. Some of our bridges are being replaced, at least a hundred years old and more to come. And the opportunities to go get those dollars to repair that infrastructure and remodel and replace and improve it. I think it's going to be a number of years before we finally say, yeah, we've got all that cleaned up. It's just going to take time. And if we don't put in for these projects, these grants that are right now available. Second thing I want to make a comment, because it's a trip to Washington, where we saw many other cities and towns just like us, hand in hand, looking for money to do the same kinds of projects from the same era, a hundred years ago or two hundred. If you're on the East Coast, three hundred years ago. Infrastructure across America needs to be repaired or replaced. We're all part of that structure, and all of us are standing hand in hand at the Capitol Hill, asking for that money. Thank goodness we had consultants that could help us through that maze. And thank goodness that at the end of four days, three days, we ended up with a chunk of money to either repair what we've got or put in place what we need, right? It was fire, it was a building fire. Of all of this infrastructure, I balance that need against what I've seen on paper today. It's the biggest, probably the biggest budget we've ever seen as a city. What I grant you is one thing, is a lot of work needs to happen. And number two, we will reap those benefits if we do what we've been doing for the last two and a half years. Stick to ours, repeat your plan, and get those projects going as we move forward. We've got a lot of work to do. So I take that large number versus what we need for the place. And there's even more things coming up. Some things we get opportunity, I get that too. We are at the right place at the right time with everything we try dealing with, attracting a higher tourism dollar, and all those things that that can benefit the city. I do that. But I never forget in the beginning, if something goes bad, if we have a disaster, we've got to be sure our infrastructure is moving forward. Two and a half years ago, we were dealing with fighting fires, floods, almost all at the same time, and that was so fast. And it's two and a half years later, and I see a lot of progress in the new construction area. So all the work that we've made so far, that do, are ready to move us into that future, whatever it is. So again, it's a big number, but so is the opportunity to repair things that are a hundred years old. We've got to do that. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, sir.
Tina, go ahead.
Okay, we're going to do essentially the same presentation that you saw the one group last week, and we are starting with Pat. She is online. So Pat, if you want to go ahead and just let me know as you want me to click through your slides.
Pat, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay.
If we could start with the agenda, I'd like to make a couple of comments. Mayor, members of the council, it's a pleasure that we present this budget to you tonight. But before we get into the details of the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, we wanted to back up and tell you how we got started on this. One of the discussions you just had on the grants is because you are under home rule election and home rule expenditure limitation according to state statute, if you do not put it in the budget, you can't spend it. And I just recently had a town that faced a large grant that they wanted to do and they couldn't do because they hadn't included it in their budget. And they couldn't up their budget once you adopted, they kind of budgeted. So I think that it's really safe to put in this, a large number, especially as successful as Globe's been in giving grants, it's really quite the achievement that you guys can get those grants that you do. And it would be a shame for you to get awarded grant and not be able to spend it. So that's why you see those, those large numbers in there to give the council the flexibility because all the grants have to come to you for approval anyway, and on the grant order, and you still have control over that. The other thing that's always looked at besides a match is what is the impact of operation and maintenance? Because that is also a consideration that always has to be looked at because usually there's maintenance that comes with the grant. So there's some really good appropriations that are out there now that doesn't require matches, and I think it's really great that the city's going for it. I'd like to go over the agenda, just real quickly. I'm going to be reviewing the status of the twenty-one, twenty-two audit and looking at the changes to the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. And then I'll be passing it on to Tina, who will be going over the twenty, twenty-three preliminary results or the estimated results as well as the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. So we can go to the first slide, Tina? Again, this is just the big picture of revenues by fund, and we wanted to show you what it was or is at this point in time for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. We have unaudited amounts, which means we're still doing some adjustments to the ledger. Dennis and I were on the phone today, still doing adjustments, and we're hoping to get everything trued up and ready to go for the auditors to start next week on the twenty-two audit. So a lot of these numbers probably won't change, but there may be some that will. We know there will be some. And so that's why we're being very careful about the fund balance that we're going to be talking about over the next few years. The next slide is just the expenditures that you can see for twenty-one, twenty-two. And then if you move on to the third slide, where the general fund revenues, I'll talk about the general fund. The general fund is your largest fund in the town and city. And what it is, is that it's called general fund because you can use them for any municipal purpose and spend it for any national purpose. And it probably houses most departments, it does house the most departments of any other fund. So we're going to talk a little bit more in depth on the general fund. As far as revenues go from twenty-one, that was your last audit in year. And we always start out the budget process looking at what your twenty-one audit figures were. That's your fund balance, that's your savings account that then can be rolled forward into the next fiscal year and used for one-time things, as the city manager said, for capital and that sort of thing. So we looked at the twenty-one audit, and then we go in and we do the revenue estimate for twenty-two, and we do the expenditure estimate for twenty-two. Well, the good thing is that we've gotten through twenty-two, we've cleaned up a lot of the general ledger, and we've got a pretty good idea where that's going to end up as far as the fund balance goes. Some of the things that occurred was that your sales tax from twenty-one to twenty-two was up about twenty-six thousand, overall taxes were up by sixty, sixty thousand. But your state share revenue saw a little bit of a decrease. And if you recall, this is the effect of COVID because of job losses and shutdowns and things. Income tax went down. That is from two years ago, income tax that people paid in, and then the cities received it two, two years later, or the calculation's two years later. You received their improvements from two years ago, collections. You then have your vehicle license tax, and that was down. And again, as people are holding on to their car, the value of a card was down, and therefore, the amount you pay in your license fees for them. And this is shared by all the cities and towns, states, based on calculation. The biggest increase that you saw on twenty-two is the ARPA funds, the one remaining to twenty-six, that we have put in the general fund. And the reason we put it in the general fund was because they came out with a final rule, the treasurer did, that you could use it for any municipal purpose. And so a large portion of this, these funds were used for the pool, and you'll see that going forward. On the expenditure side, which is the next slide, general fund department, twenty-one, twenty-two. It was relatively flat for a lot of departments. The police did go up by two hundred thousand, Hollywood Works up by a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, museum by seventy-eight thousand, economic development by... up by 200,000. Public Works up by 158,000. Museum by 78,000. Economic Development by 341. Of course, the largest one was the pool that went up by 1,441,88. And that's where our ARPA funds were used. And then you got a lot of donations to the tune of $750,000 were the pool donations. You also have transfers to the active adult in libraries, something that includes every year. It's almost an ongoing thing we created too. And that has also been included in the amount of 247,137 for 22. Now, what we've done for 23 is that once we look at what the fund balance was starting July 1 of 21, that become, you add in the revenue, subtract out the expense, that becomes your ending fund balance for 22, but then your beginning fund balance for 23. So then what we had to do was go through and say, what is our estimated revenues? And what is our estimated expenditures? To come up with the fund balance that can be used for one time liars. Go to the next slide. This is the fiscal year 23 adopted budget versus the 23 revised budget. And when the council approved the budget, your total budget was 42,541,669. And that hasn't changed. Your total budget hasn't changed. But the buckets that the money was put in were revised and to the tune of about 6,129,346 for the general funds and special revenue funds. And this is going to be coming back in August or September for council approval. But I did check with the auditor general on your net expenditure limitation, whatever you got for your budget, as I mentioned before, including grants and everything, that is your expenditure limitation. So we'll start with the total amount, just change between general fund and special revenue funds. Now, there will be more transfers that I'll be bringing forward to council, because the state statute also requires that if you spend one department over another, over the budget, you can't just automatically transfer money. So in other words, police spent more than their budget, then they're going to have to get transferred from another department that maybe had funds left over or from a contingency reserve. And that has to be brought by the council and approved. So that'll all be in the memo, and I'll be writing to council in August or September. So if we go to the next slide, this is the things that were fixed actually in the budget forms, in the auditor general budget forms. The revenues were put in the grants in the general fund, and revenues cannot be put in to, if they're official grants with federal or state requirements, and they're specified for specific purposes, they must be included in a grant fund. So those were moved out into the special revenue funds. A lot of the revenues were put in for the grant fund on forms, but then there was no expenses in the budget that was laid out. Bridge fund was created in fiscal year 21, but not appropriated, so that I fixed within the budget. WIPA funds were combined in the sewer fund, and they actually have to have their own fund, because WIPA wants to make sure what you spend on and, you know, what the award was and how much you spent year to date and how much is received. The bottom line, some funds in departments are overstated and some are understated at this point in time, but that's why I'm going to be written back in the middle of council in August and September to officially correct the fiscal year 23 budget. And then we'll be all in compliance with everything. And we're starting out with the right figures in for fiscal year 24 budget. And that's what Tina will be talking about a little bit on her next few slides. So if the council doesn't have any questions at this point, I will turn it over to Tina.
Okay, Mayor, members of the council, thank you. Happy fiscal new year. It's always an exciting time as a budget person, which turns July 1. I'm going to be going through a lot of the same slides that Pat went through, but I'll be focusing on the revised, Pat's revised 23 budget and the proposed 24 budget. We will speak to some of the estimates for this fiscal year, but as we discussed, there are some known errors, some accounting issues in there. So I'll try and address that, but I don't want to get too terribly hung up on that. Again, the important thing to note is, as Paul said, under home rule, this is your not to exceed proposed budget number for fiscal year 24, 65,334,122. Again, some of the things that are commenting on have been discussed already, but the overall growth, and I'm going to go ahead and move to the expense side, because I'll do the general fund revenues in more detail, and each of the special revenue funds will be addressed as I go through that fund. So this is a growth of 53% over your 23 budget. It's 22.8 million. That sounds like a scary number, but as we address 13 million of that almost is just growth in grants. In the general fund, the 3.5 million growth, 2.5 million of that is just appropriating your fund balance that you did not have really fully appropriated in fiscal year 23. 2.6 million is the new WIPA loans and carry forward the existing WIPA loans. 5.6 million is in the HIRF bridge growth and tax funds, which as Councilmember Gonzalez mentioned, is your infrastructure and it's using of that fund balance. Again, if you don't appropriate the fund balance, it's there. You need to use it. You've got to put it in the budget. There was a reduction in water and sewer funds for some fund balance that was already spent. So that number has come down about 2 million, but we're really talking about much less in terms of the operational growth, and we'll go through that. General fund, again, we'll talk more in detail, but instead of budgeting your full fund balance, you only had about $357,000 of that, which is like less than a 3% contingency fund. Even the normal contingency would have been about 15%. So the jump to having 2.9 million in your contingency is a pretty considerable change. And we'll talk about the grants, we talked about the grants quite a bit, about one large fund that is. And again, the list will have what, almost 37 million in possible grants, but you can't spend that all in one year. You don't even need to budget it all in one year, because those kinds of projects get spent over multiple years. So I will talk about general fund revenues. I'll do the property tax levy on the next slide, but the remaining taxes are up about 120,000. It's just like a 1% growth in tax revenues. The Fed tax has increased both in revenue and expenditures. See that in detail later. And all of those expenses are going to be going to those Fed tax community groups. This also is a not to exceed number. It's kind of a, the, I can't see this slide over here. It was about 240 to 250,000. We raised that to 300,000. So each of those groups will get between 40 and 50,000. So if the revenues come in, they get more. If you budgeted it at 240,000, though, they would have to stop you if more revenues came in. So that's, again, a reason to be optimistic in that revenue, because it's kind of a pasture. And as we talked about this year, five of that money is going to go to five community groups, as well as some of that coming back to the council for First Fridays. The licenses and permits are up from last year's budget, but down from this year's forecast. So it's kind of in between the two. It's a good thing to be conservative on your revenues. If more comes in, more falls to the fund balance or is able to be used during the year. The sales tax, I'm sorry, let me jump back into taxes for a second, was pretty aggressive over the current year estimates, but we do have a full year of the new tax rate, and there is reimbursement expected from the town of Miami, as well as several new businesses that are coming online. So that's one of the reasons for the big change in that particular group. The intergovernmental rate is based on the state TPT, DLT, and urban revenue sharing numbers that are estimated by the league and were given to us in March. Overall, that's up about 600,000, 620,000, as well as a small increase in contract required revenue according to recommended by Chief Robinson. Franchise fees, charges for services, this is a conservative estimate, almost static, although it does have some new pool revenues in there for the opening of the pool for admissions and pool rental rentals and such. The fines increased based on the actual court fines that have been coming in. And the interest lines increased due to better tracking of the local government investment pool interest. And so your investment accounts have earned money, and we're able to appropriate that as well. Additional contributions are anticipated for the pool in the coming year. And then, of course, you've got your fund balance carried forward of 2.5 million. The next one is just your general fund property tax and levy. This was reviewed in the finance working group. It's based on a flat levy, equals the last year's levy at 534,024. So taxation required, because you're not raising the taxes, you're actually lowering the rate so that if the same, that if this rate was applied to the same property as last year, you could achieve the same levy as last year. The growth of $4,300 is just the value of the new rate applied to the new construction. So your entire new levy is 538,328. And it is anticipated, this is the rate that we will adopt on August 8th after the appropriate posting and public hearings. Now, I will go through the general fund expenses by department. Council had a drop in medical insurance that had to do with actual insurance elections. That was about a $30,000 variance. There's other small variances. We did move some of the contracts that were in council's budget to administration. You'll see administrations contracts grew quite a bit. But sunny path for HR matters, there was actually a payment for Wells Fargo fees that were actually trying to get eliminated with the bank, because we do so much business with them. So hopefully that will, nobody will be paying for that next year. As well as formalizing what council membership, we saw, oh, no, which one of you was talking about, the league, going to the league. So the league, National League membership and benefit that is, comes from having those associations and the money that that brings in its grants. So that's been formalized in the council budget. Here's where you can see the Fed tax, community groups at 250,000. So this is, again, a not to exceed number. And we'll be coming back to council with new letters for each of the community groups going forward. So they'll have a good understanding. I don't want them to see that and think they're going to get 50,000. They'll know that it's a not to exceed number. Administration increased 3.1 million, but again, 2.5 million is that increased contingency that was not included in the budget this year. So it's really about 577,000 over increase. 164,000 is administrative personnel. We'll talk about positions a little later. And then 140,000 is set aside in the general fund for merit raises for next year, if that is a decision that we move forward with. The biggest jump is the outside legal counsel and consultants and contractual services. And as Paul mentioned, this is partially to fill the gap in the finance division at this time. And some of this might be offset by salary savings. But it's an important year for monitoring these funds and these financials. I think another thing that I've mentioned before is that the contracts, sometimes you put your contracts in administration because it's easy, you know, breaking up a phone bill, breaking up a large IT contract. You say, well, let administration give our HR things on that. But there is merit in looking at that during the year and saying, well, should this be shared by the water, the enterprise funds? Should this be shared by the special revenue funds if there's costs? So I think we have an opportunity this year to look more closely at those contracts and monitor them more closely and see if there's merit in moving some off. If we actually move some in, like you said, taking it from council and moving it into administration, there's a chance to look at those and see where they should be throughout the budget as well. I also wanted to mention that it does include money for a case study for this year. So that was one of the things Paul wanted to make sure we mentioned. Fire appears to be down 178,000, but that's really because the, there was 550,000 in the 23 budget for the ladder truck and fire station principal and interest that were budgeted. But they're not in 24. There's, I don't know if Paul wanted to talk about that or not.
So we are, we're moving forward on a couple of tracks. The new fire station, funding of that is the top priority that council's identified, we've identified. Initially, we were going to do 13 million through USDA, but we also now have 2.3 million sitting in a possible community earmark with, at the federal level. We're also in the process of completing the primary application for USDA. We're going to cut, we're going to work both paths. Do we want to go USDA? Do we want to go with the contractual money that we can get through the federal government? We should know by the end of the year whether the federal money comes in. If it does, we can get started with that money. If it doesn't, we can go ahead and kick off the USDA money, probably about in January, and get going with the process of design and clearing the site and some of the other things we have going on. Because we weren't sure which option was going to hit and at what level the cost of the station would be, we didn't want to park a bunch of money for what ifs. And so made the decision to hold on budgeting for debt service on the USDA money until we had a better handle as to how much we'd be borrowing and what the timing would be and when we'd need that money. And so that's why we, the difference between this year and last year. Does that help?
Moving forward with the station, will that payment come this next fiscal year? Would you be using the loan?
If we get the, I think the payment, I believe the payment starts as soon as you start drawing down from that money. And so we would have to, we would have to look at that and see how much we're going to need to close out the year and allocate that. So we would have to come to council, obviously, and say, we're going to pull the trigger on this loan. This is when we plan to start. And this is what it's going to do. And then we would tell you where we plan to pull that money and how that's going to, how that would work.
So the payment for the station would be incorporated with the revenue that we generate throughout the year?
Yeah, the, the.
The loan would be paid with revenue from taxes?
The USDA loan, if that is a mechanism, and probably even if we get the federal money, the primary mechanism for building the station will be funded through general fund revenues. And that is, that is our only choice on, that is the primary choice and the logical choice for that. We're not doing any bonding or anything else. We're just, we, one of the goals of doing our 1% sales tax increase was be able to fund this construction, and we will be able to fund this construction.
Thank you. Additionally, in the fire department, I mentioned that reserves and overtime's were not budgeted in fiscal year 23, and they have been budgeted. So overall, there was a net growth of about 375,000 in the fire department. Police, again, also has a lot of moving parts. There was an overall increase of 200,000, but it was 500,000 in personnel and overtime, because it wasn't budgeted last year. But it was offset by a drop in the public safety retirement rates for next year. So additionally, we have a few more, as you, if you hire retired officers, you end up paying into ASRS. So there's a few more of the state retirement system increase as well.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, Tina, excuse me for a second. One of the, one of the first things, once we have our fund balance figured out, will be to come back and look at maintaining our purchase of, redoing our fleet with PD. We have a five-year plan for re-upping. We're doing four vehicles a year. We still want to do that. I did want to bring it at this point, but it is an important piece of the puzzle. We're still driving Crown Vics around that are nearing 20 years. And we're running hard on the cars that we do run right now. And so it'd be better for the majority of the fleet if we strengthen that. If you have a small fleet and you run it hard all the time, then you're just going to wear through them pretty quick. So, and this would be a lease and not a purchase. So I think it'll be affordable, but that would be one of my first priorities to do that. Now, one of the reasons we can get away with this is because they, the lag time on vehicles, we're still waiting for two Tahos we ordered from last year. So we'll be watching that. But I just wanted to let council know, continuing the vehicle purchases for police is a priority for the administration and I believe priority for council. That's all I have for that.
That's what my last comment was, includes two, the two Tahos, these payments are included in, as well as some hardened laptop leases for both fire and police that you have approved a couple of months ago, maybe. Magistrate personnel costs increased about 30,000. Public Works now includes the cemetery and engineering again. That's, so that one's up by, those two numbers, about 265,000. But they had a reduction in CIP up by about 200,000. But, so this is the third way we took this out, we added this in. There's that 120,000 in contingency for on-call engineering studies survey that I don't know if you've approved all of them. I got one.
No, we were in the process of approving. We got one down and both, eight to go.
So you'll see that mentioned in both the general fund, Public Works, as well as water and sewer. Economic Development has one of the larger jumps, 98,000 in personnel costs because of some addition of staff. First Friday is budgeted at 127,000. It's 65,000 this year. Again, they're getting that additional 40 to 50,000 from the Fed tax. And some areas were reduced. There was a grant that was double booked, both open council and in economic development last year. The pool is in business. That number is both a continuation of $377,000 in construction to be completed in fiscal year 24, as well as the new operational budget of 296,000 for the pool.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, a couple of things. The economic development staff, The economic development staff, one of the key people we brought on was a grant writer. And that is, all of the money that we're looking in, this 21 million, is partially because we're going out. The timing is right, the money is there, but we also have the capacity to go after it, to do the paperwork, to do the applications, and then we have the capacity to utilize it in Public Works and the different departments. And Connie was at that last key, that the grant writer position. We have a lobbyist to help us get it, and then we have a grant writer to help us to receive it. That was one of the salaries. Also a permit tech, if you have so much development activity and keeping, making, we're moving forward on our documentation process. We looked, documentation has not been a priority in years prior. It has been last year and it is this year. And that's some of the improvements in economic development is part of development services too, they're combined. And so it's not all that, although First Friday has been such a success. And it's important for, you know, that is helping to generate some of this too. So I just wanted to share those comments. And on the, on the pool, I think we're looking about, like I say, about 300,000 would be our normal operational costs. I think our cost recovery on fees would be about 10 to 15% of that, maybe 30 to 45,000 once we start charging. It's not, you know, the fees will never pay for itself. But I think that this year with the first year free has been a great success and simplified things going in and out and everything like that. So we're happy about that. But just a reminder, next, the second year, it's going to be a dollar for children and $2 for adults.
Just a comment on the pool, Paul, also, you know, the operation budget of O&amp;M is operating 290,000. You're saying we'll return about 10 to 15. But I think it's just so that people need to understand that the stopping point for the community aquatic center was the O&amp;M. They couldn't find a way to operate that. The city government stepped up to take on the operation maintenance of this amazing facility now, a $5,000 facility. So I hope they understand the importance and the, the only way it was made possible was the city stepped up to accept that cost.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, I agree. And I think it's a, you know, people walk into that pool, not only is it a beautiful facility, but there, you know, eight to 10, well, at least six to eight lifeguards looking out over everybody. You got lifeguards in the shallow end, you got lifeguards in the deep end, you got lifeguards at the slide. I think, I think people, it's a confidence that you go in there, you can take your kids and have a good time, and you know it's a safe facility. I think that's, and what we have to do now is make sure it's a safe facility.
Last one on the line is the fleet maintenance. It's, looks like it's down 70,000, but again, there were 112,000 about in CIP projects. And so they're actually up about 39,000 staffing. Some of the CIP projects that were completed were a drill press, a car lift, assembly tables, some power upgrades. So some of those items that were on their list last year are still needed and will be brought forward as part of the CIP budget that we look for later in the year. Oh, and the transfers are on there, that's what Pat talked about, so that's what it will take to support the library and the active adult center. Next slide, this is one slide that changed from last week when I showed you. It was just in the FY '23 count, I had the numbers wrong between the general fund and the special revenue funds, but they both add to the same numbers at the bottom. So I just wanted to go with that according to what I've learned is that this FTE count, of course, does not include the seven members of council, doesn't include the service and volunteer, in the volunteer fire department, and the three volunteer fire pensions. So these are the changes since the end of '22. Admin increased by the administrative services manager and customer services representative. And police increased by one new gang task force member that is funded by Hua County. In the magistrate office, the part-time code from half down to a quarter. And then Public Works has positions both in the general fund and in the special revenue funds. So they added six people in the general fund. Two are those 410 pool recreation workers, two are maintenance workers also assigned to recreation, one is a new manager position, and a fleet position is the increases in the general fund. So that totaled six.
And Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, just to reiterate, there was a discussion and a budgeting of 275,000 last year for additional Public Works employees generally. And that's from both Public Works, the streets, water, wastewater. We put that money in from the positions budgeted. I believe we missed two in there, but right now, when you total up all the additional empty, new positions, not just empty, but new positions, well, some actually have people in their positions for Public Works. The total department were at eight, and that includes the six that we had committed to last year and the two that we miscounted. And it's hard to track those because they cut across so many units and the enterprise funds. But believe, now, filling those, we have budgeted positions, but we still have trouble filling the positions we have. And that is, do we have all those bodies ready to go to work right now? No, we don't. We have a lot of postings on the web, and we're always looking for people, and there's turnover. But if we can find them, we can, we can hire them and we can, we can pay them. And even to the point we've talked about, if we got to the luxury of over-hiring. Because sometimes when you get, you got a couple of people and two of them look good, just pull the second one in, and, because eventually you're going to have an empty slot and they can drop back down. We can cover that with those balances. But the big thing right now is trying to find those perfect employees that want to come and work in Public Works and have those skills. And we're training a lot of people. John, John Spence and his people spend a lot of time working with people. So that is an ongoing challenge, but if we can find them, we can hire them.
Those two positions you mentioned were here in Water that were maintenance workers that were missed in the last budget cycle. So this has physician in the library going from half to full-time. The water maintenance workers that were missed in last year's budget. But you'll see this is the same number at the bottom as the previous time I showed you this slide. The pool is not included in these numbers because right now it's being done with J-1 temporary services. There is a plan to perhaps zap those with seasonal workers, but again, we're not committed. The decision isn't final at this time. So now we're going to talk about some of those special revenue funds. I combined the highway use of revenue funds, the excise tax money, and the bridge on a single slide because this is everything, streets, bridges, roads, and sidewalks. So it shows the combined operational revenues and use of fund balance, which again, was not originally, the bridge fund wasn't originally included in the '23 budget. It's showing now in Pat's revised budget. She had to take that out of the grant fund network. Again, a good reason for a, you know, Mr. Grant. The only thing that's really operational on the expense line here is that herd operational expenses of about 918,000. So there are about 560,000 in people and 355,000 in street repair materials and contracts for ongoing. But the balance that you'll see up there, which is the herd contingency, the CIP construction, excise tax, CIP construction, and the bridge construction. All that funding is for completion of the upper canal reef bridge, the cottonwood bridge. And then anything that might be available to start design, work on future projects, provide matching grants for, matching monies for future grants. So after the bridge is complete and we can see what's available left in fund balance in these funds to go forward with the sum of that.
Tina, is the 3.5 for the sidewalk project that in this category is in another category?
That is in this category, I believe. Pat can correct me if I'm wrong.
You know, you showed it to me this afternoon.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I believe that we put that because it's not truly a grant.
Yeah, no, we approved the, we did first read, we're going to accept that. So the three and a half million plus the two 600,000s, one for cottonwood, are, they're listed in the grant, but they're also built in, baked into the budget in this, I'm not sure exactly which tab, but it is baked in, I saw it.
And we have the water fund. It's down because it did have a $4 million contingency reserve in its '23 budget. And some of it was actually spent in '22, as we're cleaning up '22, we're finding that out. And some more of it was spent in '23, so, and they had a 1.3 million designated for capital construction. But it's very important to note that there is a securing our future water, kind of a restricted fund balance in there. So I called that out on a separate line so that you can see that and carry forward. It also has the two new grants here in capital and contingency for the Haguen take replacement and northeast corridor waterline replacement. So that funding is in there. And, and the principal and interest on the WIFIO loans. So those, when the WIFIO loans come in and are spent, that's with the plus of when the debt payment comes back and tell your operational funds, so that's in there. Sewer fund is almost static. There was an increase of about 25,000 for personnel costs. There was a $730,000 reduction in CIP, but then there was another 750,000 proposed grant. So for the citywide sewer study. So oddly, that budget came out to be another $20,000 difference, which is unusual. The library fund. I, you can see on the revenue line that this is supported by the general fund to the tune of about 145,000. That was over on those transfer lines in that first general fund. And there is about 137,000 in grants and aid and things that come in to support the library. Overall, decrease of 27,000 again, because there was 40,000 in CIP, some of those things got done, some didn't. And an operational increase of 13,000. The active adult fund, which is also supported by the general fund, in the amount of 125,000, which is less because we did get news from the penal, Hua County's senior citizen center that their revenues increased a little, so that kind of, we'll see that the anticipated, the budget transfer was 143,000 this year, and it's 125,000 for next year. As I mentioned earlier, it does, I already mentioned this earlier, but it does look like their expense budget's down 92,000, but this was actually because last year, just accidental, these things happen, and the medical was budgeted twice. So it was just kind of unusual thing. It doesn't have to do with CIP, it had to do with just kind of your really large spreadsheet, you're pulling in things, they just pulled in the benefit number twice. So I don't want anyone to think we're cutting the active adult budget. And then this is the water infrastructure and finance authority of Arizona. Look that up. We've talked about WIFIO loans for a long time, not really WIFIO, but WIFIO stands for. So I know it was water and wastewater. These 2014 and 2017 loans are fully received and expended, so there's nothing for them in next year's budget. Although as I mentioned, the payment on the principal is over in those operational numbers we just talked about. But there is approval already for $2 billion, for $2 billion grant. And there's the option to apply for another $2 million in '24. So overall, this budget's going to be about 2.6 million. Again, if the loans come, it's going to be, we'll just get that.
Quick question on that, real quick. I've been on council for a while, and there was a time where our enterprise fund for sewer and water was being subsidized by our general fund. But I know that once you started really going after these WIFIO loans, they're very specific that we have to have enough revenue coming in through that mechanism to cover the loans and our expenses. And so we're not borrowing or having to loan money to enterprise fund.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Pat, if you're there, I'm going to let you talk to this because I know, I know what you're talking about is a ratio that has to be maintained. And so let's see if Pat can answer that question, and.
Sure, sure, council member. Yeah, there's a ratio that has to be met by WIFIO, 1.2 times coverage. In other words, you have to have, be able to pay your debt service plus half 20% more. And so that's part of the test that's going on. One of the things that the council will be looking at this next fiscal year is a rate study. And they will take that into consideration, as well as all the other factors that go into the rate study. This budget for '24 just assumed a 5% overall revenue increase. It doesn't mean rate increases. Rate increases are different than revenue increases because it's who you collect what from and how you build your rate structure. But as far as revenue increases, we had projected an additional 5% to cover the cost that you're seeing. And then if you absorb more WIFIO debt, you have to add into the debt service ratio coverage. So you're correct, council member.
And Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, to Councilman Chipley's question. I know some cities are, get a little loosey-goosey on either way. General fund helping the enterprise because they don't want to put a rate increase. And then some, there's a city that's very popular that has the enterprise funding the general. And we have been, this council and prior councils have been very down the line that enterprise should pay for itself, shouldn't be using, but that those funds should be separated. And we continue that tradition of separation.
Okay. Paul, if I might add, Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. One thing that I do want to bring to attention, there is a statute that says that if you subsidize your water fund or sewer fund from like a general fund, that you have to have in place how you're going to get off of that subsidization. Because it's run like a business. It's supposed to be self-supporting and self-sufficient like a business. So there's that. And then the other rate is that if you're subsidizing the general fund with utility rates, and I'm not talking about indirect cost application, because if that's okay to do to pay for costs that they cause a general fund, but if it's just a subsidization, then the rate payers can get upset about that too. That you're, you're taking money from the utility that they're paying for, for a service or what they get water or sewer from and you're using it in the general. So you have to be very careful, the town has, the city has been very careful in doing that over the years and making sure that those are separated. And then that's why you're doing a rate study, probably coming up here. So look at that too.
Thank you, Pat.
Okay, and our last slide here is on the grants, showing that $13 million increase in grant funds. But the one I want to show you is the grant highlights. Paul has distributed to you this grant fund worksheet, the numbers on that total, almost 47 million, like 43 million in potential grants out there. So there's a lot to be excited about. These are some, just the highlights for infrastructure and the fire station, the ladder truck, the Michelson Building.
Michelson.
Michelson Building.
That's right.
I knew that was it. And some other improvements. And again, you can't spend it all in a year to get it. So a budget of 21.2 million, I think, is aggressive, but still a great opportunity out there.
And Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, the 21 million is a possible revenue. If we come up, you know, a month from now and find out there's a really cool grant that we're slam dunking, and we can shift this around. And we have 21 million in grant possibility, or in grant funding. And we have a menu of things that we're, we're about to, we feel is about to happen, things that have a good chance, and we're halfway there, and things we're applying for, and things that are priorities for the city. That, you know, we're applying for sidewalks in any shape, form, that we can, we can get. Because sidewalks are big, is turned into an important infrastructure that we need. We will, we are including the list of grant priorities into the budget document. And some of them are not fully funded because we believe that even if it's a big grant for sidewalks, we have some engineering done, we, some things we need to do, some preliminary engineering, things like that. So we don't think we could even spend it all in that whole cycle. But we're not limited by the names and the numbers that we put in the grants to what we can accept. Well, we'll accept, we'll just start with, as money comes up and we start accepting things, we'll just work down the line. This is, as Pat always says, this is a roadmap, not necessarily set in stone on that. Same with the CIP funds. We're going to include a document of CIP items that is priority, put together by the staff with their A, B, and C rating. put together by the staff with their A, B, and C ratings, and some carry forwards, and to show council where staff's priorities are, and we'll likely pick from them when we get the fund balances settled down, but that doesn't, it's not limited to that. Normally, like say, we highlight, you have money for this item, we're going to wait and do that later. But we will include them in the budget document, so they'll look at them, council will be able to look at them, the citizens will be able to look at what we're trying to do, and the ranking that we put in. Thank you, Mayor, Members of Council.
Slide is your auditor general. Come on, we all get excited about. This is what would be posted in your posting for your public hearing for the adoption of your final budget, until the adoption of the final budget. You'll notice the lines all balanced, your revenues and your expenditures match, just like the state statutes say. So we're excited about that, and it ties out to that number. The next steps are to post the public hearing for two consecutive weeks, I'm sorry, the next step is to finish this meeting and decide if you want to adopt the budget first. Then we would post a hearing for the next two consecutive weeks and hold a final public hearing, final budget adoption on July twentieth, where the budget could go down if you choose between them, but cannot go up. I would like to say thank you for the opportunity to work with you all, and enjoy meeting John, Chief Walters, Chief Robinson, Ray Allen of the library, and he works so hard and he wanted to sound proud, and so many others working on this, and just had four months to get to know Globe, but I look forward to helping a little bit more next year in setting up some processes for tracking, this is your budget, this is trying to accomplish what you want to see happen for your city and your town, and I've just really, really, truly enjoyed it, and that's reason I brought my husband up here this week to try one of your nice restaurants this evening. If there are any questions, I'm going to...
Last, when we first heard this first time, first read, on FTE employees, it said that public work, the chain was six, now it's a five, and I know that you moved them, but where did you move it?
This, it's five in, in public works, they actually fleet is the sixth one. So last time when I said six, it was seven, actually, so one of those was in the water and the special revenue funds, so it went, and it was the twenty-three numbers that I had wrong, so if you look between twenty-three, between the special revenue and the, between fleet and water, but it does add up to the thirty percent of last year, forty-five this year total.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, actually, I think we forgot, Pat wanted to have some closing comments, too, so when you're ready.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? I would like to just say, I hope this is the time, because I'm going to make a decision, but, you know, I just wanted to thank all the department heads, the directors, city staff, consultants, and even this council for a job well done. You know, to see the budget where it's at, and the potential of those earmarked dollars and grants, the very strong potential that you could get some of those dollars, is really impressive. It's the most I've ever seen since I've been on council by far, and it's just a testament to this team of city staff and mayor and council, just really pushing forward in its vision. It's just, it's uplifting to see this. I don't know if this is going to be a type, a situation that we're always going to be able to have these dollars out there, but one thing I will say is that the opportunity presented itself, and we had members of this team have the vision and means to go out and really try and capture so much as our hand. So I'd like to see this continue in the future, don't know if we'll be able to experience the amount of money that's available, but it is very uplifting for me to see that the opportunity was there, and the people that were put together to make this happen. Just amazing how many, how many departments, how many people, how many professionals, how many consultants it took to make this happen. So I just want to congratulate everybody on a job well done this year, and even preparing for all this, so I hope it's fruitful, I really do, but it can't be if you don't put yourself in that position. So congratulations, I think it was a job well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to add, what Freddie said also, I want to thank all the staff and Pat and Tina for all the sort of work being done. I also appreciate a single meeting on just the budget, instead of setting it's on a regular meeting, that's like a little easier to absorb and understand. I think, as Freddie said, I think our council, our staff have been focused on really, you know, working on a lot of things, specifically quality of life, we continue to work on housing for this need for our community. We talked about economic development, I mean, there's so much going on, all this budget, we're not ready for it, we're going to give it to somebody. I mean, if you look at our sales tax revenue in twenty twenty-two, six point five hundred, this year it's going to be over nine million, twenty-four, in twenty-four, we're predicting nine million dollars in sales tax revenue. I'd like to see what it was in two thousand sixteen, you know, when we first started this venture into economic development, and what the numbers are, where we're at now. So those are numbers that you can judge what success is moving forward, and so I really appreciate all the presentation, I appreciate our staff, and we just got to keep moving forward, where our vision is and our strategic plan. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before we include, we're going to toss it to Pat Walker. Pat?
Yes, Mayor, Members of the Council, two things I wanted to clarify on, on the budget, the bridge money was put into the bridge fund, and we did double check with the auditors to make sure that they were in concurrence with that, that it is a special revenue fund and will be tracked within the bridge fund, so we put it all together there. The other thing is that we put two point nine million in the community reserve, and the difference is that when I was talking about fund balance, that's where you take your revenues and your expenditures, and what falls out is fund balance, and you can carry that forward. Well, this year, with our fund balance carried forward, in addition to being able to use that, we also had some extra funds that were, in other words, revenues were more than expenditures, so we were able to budget two point nine million, so all of your fund balance is budgeted this year. And why did we do that? Again, the home rule, this gives the most flexibility for council to be able to spend the money on the capital projects you want or something, or if there's an emergency or unexpected revenue shortfall, that's what it's there for, and it's appropriate. So I just want to point that out to council. The other thing, and I said this the other evening, and I just want to say it for the public, is that I've been doing this for over forty years, and I've been working with the City of Globe for over seven years now, and I think that you should be very proud of how financially stable you are and have been and continue to be. And as the council member mentioned, you want to do this in the future, and I think I mentioned this the other night, that the best way to do that is a five-year forecast. Look at what your revenues are for the next five years, look at your expenditures for the next five years, make sure that anything that you're doing today is not going to be bad in two years from now or three years from now. You know, so far, everything is balanced, you're in the black, you know, you have fund balances, everything's good, but who knows three years to four years down the road? And so you want to look at that, especially with the legislation and how much the City of Globe is involved in fighting that rental tax, I mean, not the rental tax, the grocery tax, but there is, you know, always that threat, that somebody can come back in and propose that legislation, and then you got a what-if scenario, okay, three years out, if that goes away, what does that mean to the City of Globe? So I think that doing a five-year forecast is very, very good. And just one last note, I want to say that even though Tina is going to be hitting over the bulk of that budget stuff, it's been a real pleasure to work with the city, you grew really close to my heart, Genie and I became really good friends, and Paul's been a friend for a long time, and I will continue to support Dennis and Tina, and because I've got so much history and experience that I want to make sure Globe still stays on it, but you're in really good hands between Tina and Dennis, I just want you to know that, and that I'll be around, but I just probably will be as visible as I have to pass.
Well, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, remind council that Pat Walker is trying to retire and enjoy her retirement, and she's spent so much time, and I don't think she knew what, exactly how much work it took to straighten this out. Pat, thank you for all this run-up the past four months and getting us to this point, and now hopefully you can just watch down and just pick up the high levels questions when we, when we like, okay, what are we going to do with this? We'll get Pat on the phone. Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, Tina. Pat?
I just want to say thank you, but I also was hoping I'd hear from you again on that one particular item. There aren't any alligators in Arizona, but it just seems like we're going to fight them this year at other levels of government, not saying who or where. The point is, we need a forecast type of construct here, so if we do get threatened by another alligator, we can internally build our own defense, not to say that Arizona Lakers citizens in town didn't come to our events, but they are responsible in the aggregate for the entire state, the leading citizens in town, and I commend them a lot for the work they did this year. But it would be humbous to build our own defensive wall with our own defensive knowledge, and a five-year forecast gives us that luxury. It suddenly turns into money well spent if we do that, and the next time that alligator comes forth, we'll have it better sorted. I think it's analogy, analogy may well be used. We need to build our own capability by doing, and I think it's time we start doing that. If citizens in towns do that, they have the wherewithal to do that and get that. But if we don't do that, we could tend to lose some revenue, and I need to give it back a dollar, I really need it. So I want to just recommend that we not lose sight of that particular project. Mr. Manager, I really would like to see this particular construct happen this year, and I know it's difficult, you've got a lot of other different things to choose, but this one could be crucial again, at some point down the road, so we need to be forewarned of that particular project. It's always helpful indeed to be to have a forecasting procedure in process, it lends itself to other efficiencies, forecasting for budgets at the department level, including forecasting manpower, so we haven't touched, but I think we need to start going down that road and make sure that our research backs up our old numbers, and then we can go toe-toe with any entity that wants to take a dollar away from us, because that's what I'm asking. Doing with knowledge and all of this power. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, I think with, sticking with the analogy, that would make, Mr. Mayor, that would make you a crocodile Dundee for your work on the executive committee and down at the legislature, fighting those crocodiles, so, you know, good day. I don't know any Australian slang, though. Thank you.
Wait. Yeah. Since this is the actual item, anything, motion for approval for candidate? Motion for approval for new budget? Second, we have a motion, a second for approval of our candidate's budget, total budget of sixty-five million, three three oh four one twenty-two. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Call for the vote, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, nay, standing, motion passed.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, Pat.
Go for motion for adjournment, motion nay. Second, motion second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye. Aye. The adjourn, thank you.
Thank you.